It is May 10th. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Application from Foley and an application from Frazee. Four of our members are present, myself, Dave Tessier, I'm the chairman, Dave Hale is here with me. Pat Frazee is on by phone. And Kevin Sharp is on here somewhere.
Hi.
Hi Kevin. Our fifth member, Don Nugabauer, can't be on tonight, so we're working with the four of us. So. We're gonna take these one at a time and the way it works is I'll read the application and any added information that we've received regarding the application and we can talk, we have to vote on our seeker environmental review. And and then we can open the hearing. At which point we can ask the applicant to present anything further that was not stated in the application. Then we can have a question and answer back and forth with the board, get any questions out of the way or taken care of. And then we can talk to the public if there's anybody that has comments from the public. I'm not quite sure how that works, but they can I guess they can call in a question or email a question and Veronica can share that with us. If at the end of all that, we feel we've answered all the questions and we don't have any, got all the information, we can and after closing the hearing, everybody's welcome to stay on and listen while we deliberate and hopefully make a decision tonight. So that's the goal. And that's generally the procedures if you have. So if I've forgotten anything else, I'm sure the board will remind me. But we're gonna start with application from John and Mary Jane Foley and we will have a public hearing tonight to consider a lot size area variance of approximately two acres from the required four acres to 2.012 acres situated at 3044 Orndelfe Road, Manlius, Tax Mat number 0240310. So I will ask the secretary of the application, application fees all been paid?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. And has this been properly advertised?
Yes.
Okay. We did send this to Anadog County for review and we do have a response back from them. So the appropriate point, I'll read that into the agenda as well, I read their recommendation. So the application. And if the just so the zoning board members know, we've got a, we're going to have a new application form. Tim has presented us with a brand new form, it's a little easier to read, but Foley's didn't work. Privilege to that, so we've got the form we've used from before, so I will read it into the record. Applicant is John D. Foley and Mary Jane Foley from 3911 Nelson Heights Road, Casanova. Surveyor is David Breddenberg. Property address of the application is 3044 Orndelfe Road, Manlius, New York. The zoning classification is farm zone. Describe the subject of appeal or variance request. Says, "We are the owners of two contiguous parcels of land in the town that are comprised of agricultural lands and a two-family house. The farmland has been consistently and continuously farmed since at least the early 1940s. I inherited these two parcels upon the task of my dad in 2013. I am in the process of selling the farmland to another farmer while retaining the house. The house sits on a non-conforming parcel of 1.341 acres and there's a survey map attached. And I would like to file a lot line adjustment. David Reddenberg has prepared revised survey, increasing the parcel to 2.012 acres and the survey map of that is attached. According to the town's schedule limiting the use of buildings and land, the minimum lot size for a two-family in the farm district is four acres. The only way to comply with this is to remove two acres of tillable soil and currently farmed land from the farm parcel and joining it to the house parcel. Describe how strict application of the law would produce undue hardship. Increasing the lot size to four acres would require removing the two acres of primary agricultural land from the adjacent farm. There is little to no chance this land would ever be utilized as agricultural if it were added to the house parcel. We as a town would simply lose more farmland, it would also reduce the acreage that I would be able to sell. Describe how the hardship created is unique and is not shared by all properties in the immediate vicinity. The house is a two-family located in the farm district. The house is similar in size and stature to surrounding single-family homes. The minimum lot size for a single-family unit in the farm district is two acres. In regards to density, the HR zone and the hamlet of Pompey allows 15,000 square feet per unit. I'm asking the board to consider 40,000 square feet per unit in the farm zone. Describe how variance would observe the spirit of the zoning law and would not change the character of the district. This variance request takes a non-conforming lot increase and increases the lot size to over two acres. It preserves the adjacent farmland and follows the town's master plan of conserving agricultural land that are presently being farmed." And it sounds, and Mary is the, a survey. The proposed 2.012 acres. And there's another survey that shows the existing lot. The adjacent lots are also shown. We have a short environmental assessment form attached. Ace that's not necessary in this town, we only need that for commercial properties. We have an agricultural data statement submitted. I'm not sure if I need to do anything with that or not. So we do have that. There's a tax map. Portion of a tax map attached. And another survey by Reddenberg, which is a large section of the town survey. And there's an aerial photo which didn't come out very well. Can see that, it's just mostly black, but probably in color, it was very effective. But we have that. We also have the Anadog County Planning Board Resolution, which I said I would read the conclusion. And the it's a pretty standard conclusion, the Anadog County Planning Board has determined that said referral will have no significant adverse intercommunity or county-wide implications. And consequently, we acted unsullied by the referring board. So they have taken no specific action on this and this decision will be up to the board. Okay, that's all the formal reading, let's see. What else do we have? I've asked all the members of the board to visit the site. I assume they have done so. If you have, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay. We do need to take action on the seeker, the state environmental quality review law. And if I have it right, this is a residential area variance, which is a type two action and no further environmental review should be required. And in addition to that, this this DBA is acting as a lead agency. So I'll post that in the form of a motion that we have to vote on. So I ask our attorney, is that, does that all sound correct?
You certainly can do that because it's a type two action, then there will be no lead agency because by its very definition, it will not have a significant environmental impact. So I think identifying as a type two action is sufficient.
Okay. So we need a motion identifying this as a type two action. And I usually state that therefore no further environmental review is required. Do we have a second to that motion?
No second.
Dave Hale seconds that. Any further questions on that motion? If not, all members in favor? Do I need roll call vote on that? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I can see it, Pat, you're on.
Yeah, I dialed in with my phone, but I'm, I'm got a very bad connection, so.
Well, you look all right.
I'm catching most of it, so hopefully.
Okay, good. Okay, so that's the motion passes. And now we can any questions from the board on procedure or where we are or have I left anything out? If not, I think we can open the hearing, I think that would be the next item. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Yep, Dave, I do have a question on the necessity of this at all. I, I'm I don't quite get why it's necessary for him to have a variance for just a lot line move. It's a grandfathered in, he doesn't have to do anything with his lot, his lot can stay just the way it is. But he's simply gonna do a lot line move and what is stopping him from moving his lot line? That doesn't need the permission of this board to move the line. Nor do I believe it needs the permission of any town board.
If he moved it to four acres, then he would comply with the town ordinance. And in that case, the code officer could consider it a lot line adjustment. In either case, the code officer does not have to comply with that section that's allowed. If, if the town code officer at any point can say for whatever reason, I don't want to sign that as a lot line adjustment and he can refer it to the planning board for a subdivision. That's the way our ordinance reads and in this case, they're, they're, they don't want four acres. So what they're proposing to do does not comply. And that's what brings it before this board. They, they still want to apply for that. Which would make it non-conforming. And the, the code officer cannot sign that as a lot line adjustment. So that's why they're in front of us, because they want less than the required four acres.
Yeah, I understand that they want less, but I but to, it really doesn't make sense to me that if they want to increase their lots, a non-conforming lot size and get it closer to conforming, that that needs to go through this process, but I'm probably just slowing the process down and
you're changing, Patrick, you're changing the non-conformity, once you change the non-conformity, then you're supposed to change it to conformity. If you want to change it to conformity, then you have to get a variance. Anytime you change the size of this lot, which they're asking to do, it could go to a conforming lot. You understand that?
Yeah, I just was not aware that that was part of our ordinance, I guess.
But it's not, it's that, yeah, our ordinance requires any changes to a non-conforming, if you're gonna change the non-conformity, it has to be, it has to go to conformity. So and in this case, the applicant chooses not to go to conformity. Does not want to make the lot four acres, he wants to make it over two acres.
Yep, okay.
So that he can, so that, but he's changing the, the dimensions of both lots.
Right.
Okay, so do we have a motion to open the hearing?
Sure, I'll move to open the hearings.
Okay, we have a second?
Sure.
Kevin seconded. Okay, so the hearing is now open and any other questions from the board before we open to the public, talk to the public?
Tim, I've got a question, is the four acres, it's one structure and I know the town of Pompey for, if you want new, a new building, new, a house built, you need a minimum two acres. Is the four acre requirement based on it being like a people? Why is it four acres and not two acres for a structure?
My understanding is that in this district, it requires, it requires a four acre parcel for a house.
Four acres, not two acres.
No, it's because it's a two-family residence.
Because it's
My question.
Yeah.
If you build a house, you, you have two acres.
Right.
For single family, single family residence.
Yeah. And then it's different from the, it's, the hamlets are different. That goes by square feet of the lot, like, like what we did up in Pompey. And the hamlet of Pompey, so because it's out in rural.
This is a farm zone and the farm zone requires the four acres for a two-family house. Does that answer your question?
Sure.
Okay. So the hearing is open, I will start with the applicant, is there anything else you'd like to add to this?
I don't think so, it's, it's very interesting for me to, to be on this side of the fence. I, I, I've been a, I've been a ZBA member of the town of Nelson for 10 years and but I, I've never been on this side of the fence and this is very, this is just very interesting, that's all. So anyway, thank, thank you for the opportunity. I think that I have, I think I've included everything in there, pretty much the, the, the 3044 residence is, is where my grandparents used to live, my mother, only child, she, she was living there when she graduated from high school and then married my dad three months later before he went over to Germany. And my grandfather was a, he had a small farm there. And then my dad or my mother, before my dad got back from Germany in 45, she rented the next farm north across the road. And, and that's, and then they bought that farm in 46. And my grandfather was never really much of a farmer and the, my, my dad just slowly took over, you know, his, his land, my grandfather's land. And then when he, my grandmother passed away in 65 and my grandfather in 72. And then when my grandfather passed away, the fact that my mother was an only child, you know, all those, all those lands just all, kind of all, all became one. And that's how I, how I happened to, to inherit a, a 1.3 acre, you know, non-conforming, pre-existing lot. So the, and it's, again, it's always, it's always been, it's always been that way and the my, the only change that's, that's occurred, the last change that occurred on that site there at 3044 was when the, was when the small dairy barn that was my, that my grandfather used, when that burned in April of 67. Other than that, what you see down there is it's remained unchanged for, you know, for, for the last 54 years. So, but I think I've stated in there that, you know, as far as, you know, desire to, desire to sell the, the farmland on the east side. We still do have 90 acres over on the, on the west side of Orndelfe Road, obviously unaffected by this request. And, and we, we, we need the, you know, we, we, it's my understanding that we could, we could sell the 1.31 acre lot as it is, but it's important that, that we maintain the, the full use of the horseshoe driveway for, for ingress and anygress. And so that was the, that was how we got to this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? At this point?
Mr. Foley, when was the lot lines established for this dwelling years ago?
What, the, for the, the, the existing 1.31?
Yes, the existing.
That, that is, that long, long before I was born.
Okay.
That was, yeah, in the, in one, we, we have, since we took over, since we took over paying my, you know, my, my, my dad's bills and and taking care of his business, which was probably in 2008, you know, that's when his, when his Alzheimer's really kicked in big time and and I think the, I think the total farm is, is comprised of seven, seven different tax parcels. But three, the, the acreage on the, on the east side of Orndelfe Road, there, there's three separate parcels there. But for some reason where the house is at 1.31 acres, you know, that is, that has always been a, it's always been a separate tax parcel.
Okay, that was the question, that, so we have something similar to that on our farm with my grandmother's house, they just planted a house years ago and said, "We're gonna mow this much around it and the rest will stay tillable." And I don't think to this day, there's any lot line to it that was designated to it, it wasn't, there's no separate parcel for the house. So that's something my dad's gotta deal with later, that's why, that was the question, so there is two parcels here.
It, that, that's, that's the way that we understand it and that's the way that, you know, Dave, Dave Redenberg interpreted that. Dave did a Dave did a, a full survey of the farm and either, it was either in the summer of 14 or the summer of 15, I don't recall. And, and that was, you know, that, that is, you know, as far as all the, all the legal documents that we were able to provide for him as well as, you know, his own searches. You know, that's, that's what he came up with, that the, that 1.31 acres was a, was a separate parcel, but, you know, contiguous to, you know, to the rest of the land.
Right. If I can continue, where's your well located on this? I mean, this is a kind of a small lot for two-family dwelling.
Here, yeah, the well, the, the well is on the south side of the house.
Okay.
And the septic is on the north.
Okay.
John, maybe you could tell us how many bedrooms each apartment is and give us an idea what the current resident numbers are.
Here, yeah, that hasn't, and, and again, that hasn't, that hasn't changed. When my, when my grandfather died in 72, the, the building was just left vacant for at least three years, I, it was either, it was either summer of 75 or the summer of 76 that my parents decided to put two apartments in there. And in the, and they, they consist of one, one, one-bedroom apartments, it's broken out into the, into the front and the rear. In other words, they aren't flats. The, the, the front and rear are pretty much identical, little difference in footage, but the, the, the main floor consists of a, of a kitchen, a bathroom and a living room. And the second floor consists of a bedroom. And that is the same with the front apartment and the rear apartment. And the, so, yeah, they've, they've always been just, just one-bedrooms and one-bedroom apartments and the and typically, typically it's, it's only one person, occasionally there'll be a couple in there. But, you know, for the, for the most part, it's, it's only, it's only one person. That's what it's been now for several years, you know, a single, a, a single, single guy in each, in each unit.
That's weird, I mean, that's kind of like you got, you got a house and you're renting a bedroom out.
That's about, that's about what it is.
Yeah. I mean, people do that, I just, to go and call it a two-family house, it's
Well, I mean, it, you know, le, you know, technically and legally, I mean, it is a two-family house. And I think primarily that it's that way, that, you know, to state it that way is because, you know, there are, there are, you know, two furnaces and there are two water heaters and there are two separate electric services.
There's two meters on it, okay.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, that would do it.
Yeah. That's usually the definition right there.
But certainly, 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 anyone, anyone would not know that, you know, traveling, traveling up and down Orndelfe Road.
Okay, in, in both, both places, both apartments, Robert, pull off the same well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so you're, you're sharing the well with the spoils, panning electricity off the well and
Yep.
Yeah, I personally like the idea of trying to preserve the farmland aspect of it. I'm quite familiar with that property, we, we've rented that land for nearly 20 years and unfortunately, we missed out on the purchase of it. The Foleys were gracious enough to give us first option, but we didn't take that. But, you know, he's, what they're trying to do is preserve farmland, which is vitally important. Especially in the town of Pompey, we're, we're losing a lot of farmland and this is an effort on their part to preserve it and I think we should do everything we can to assist them in preserving that farmland.
I, I understand that end of it, but does it take away from the value of that house for resale? Reducing that lot, that, I mean, it'd sell better with a four-acre parcel under it.
Well, it's a one-acre parcel right now, so a one-acre, a two-acre parcel will sell better than a one-acre parcel. And I'm not sure what that, that's, I'm not sure that that's motivating them, I think they're motivated by preserving farmland. Not what they can make on the sale of that small parcel.
I, I, I personally don't see where, you know, where that being a, you know, only, only a two-acre parcel, you know, would, you know, would, would devalue, you know, that, 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 that structure at all. I, that, that, I, I hadn't ever considered that and I, and I, and I probably wouldn't. They, that's never been, yeah, that's never been, one of the things that I had, I had a construction business for 24 years and also a home inspection business for 24 and then for the last three years, my wife and I have been we'd been, went buying some, some houses, we've done seven in the last, in the last three years. You know, a couple we sold, a couple we have, you know, was rentals and the, and the others, you know, we, you know, we, we hold. And, but that that, that, that value, I'm, no, that's, that's not a consideration for me. It's the, it's, it's really, it's really is, you know, as Pat said, leaving, leaving that, leaving that, that environment, that scene at 3044, you know, into, into the future, just like it's been, you know, for, again, since the barn burned in 67, that was the last change down there.
Dave, can I ask something?
Sure.
I'm looking at the aerial map of, the aerial photo of that property. And right now it looks like to farm the backfield behind your house, they come off of this, they come off the horseshoe driveway. They come off the south side of the horseshoe driveway. Now, to the south of that is all trees. When you sell that parcel off, how are they gonna get it to back acres?
The, back in, you know, back in November The back in, you know, back in November, you know, we 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 applied to Underdog Accounting. You know, the Underdog County DOT and we had a, we we had a driveway put in The north of the north of the proposed North property line. And the we we went through the, you know, went through the whole process with the DOT. Worked with an engineer by the name of Alvin Chan. And so we had that all done. That driveway was put in or was completed Christmas, Christmas Eve day of twenty. And the inspection, the final inspection from from the county, from the county DOT That took place sometime in the week between Christmas and and New Year's. And and we have our, we have our final approval on that. We get our five hundred dollar deposit fee back. But that's how, that that's how the, you know, the egress into the farmland will be will be taken care of.
So they're gonna go through that wooded area to get back to the to get back to those, the fields back there?
Yeah, and that that there again, that's only those, the that that is only, there's only about, you know, forty, forty five feet of of And just, it's just really scrub more than anything else, but that's, that's all been cleared out. And and again, you know, the driveway, you know, put in to, you know, to on the on the county DOT specs.
Okay, I I turned around in that driveway today, it works very well. I assume that's what it was for.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm glad you got the county's approval on it.
Yes, we have, we we have all the paperwork to support that.
I was just gonna comment on the part of the reason for having the four acres and the the two acre lots and the Residential zones goes back to The seventies when we did a study in the town and that was a part of that and Reversed goes back to the generally poor soils we have for septic systems. You know, we have a generally limestone clay soils and We had a one acre lot minimum and it wasn't Prove, it was proving not to be big enough to put a well, a well and a septic system and a house and a driveway and a garage And all these things to go with it. So the committee actually wanted four acres, but they got two acres. And it was with the idea that a septic system might fail someday and there ought to be area on the land For a second replacement system and they settled down the two acre minimum in residential zones. And then four acres in the in the farm zones. So it's, you know, it's, it's not just a an arbitrary a number. It's it's based on some Requirement based From the need for septic systems and wells. So that's, that's why it's there. And it's been there for a long time, so.
I I realize that you can't pick and choose, you know, based on locations, but certainly, certainly, one of the things that 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 area, you know, doesn't have Is is any drainage issues because of because of all the gravel.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and there have been improvements in septic systems with raised beds and and other things since the seventy, since the seventies. So there there's ways around.
There's one, yeah.
Expensive, but there's ways around.
Yeah.
If you throw enough money at it, right?
That's right, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
If you, if you still had the four acre lot You could have something in there, well, you could still have it tillable up to a certain Distance from the house. For I don't know how many years you'd want to have that in a oven or something, but I mean, you wouldn't be taking away from the tillable Aspect of it. I I get trying to keep as much farmland available to till.
Well, I I that 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 is true, that that is something that, you know, that I could do. That doesn't mean that the next owner is gonna do that, though.
No, I understand that.
Here.
And it might be more valuable to the house with four acres than with just two. But that's, you don't know until you Put it on the market.
Yeah, yeah. And again, the whole value situation, that just doesn't, that isn't That that isn't one of my concerns here, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, well.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Have you ever had a problem with the well or anything or your septic, so you know?
No, no, I said, no, we
Drill something or?
No, never, no, absolutely never. And it's interesting because, you know, just a little bit north across the road, you know, where I grew up. The the, you know, that we we always had, we always had well issues up there and we always had septic issues up there. But never, never down at thirty forty four. Yeah, it it's interesting that you asked that question because, yeah, the main, the main farmhouse, that is, that's been a nightmare all the time that You know, I was born in fifty one and and right up until it, right up until the time my my dad went to the nursing home and in July of twelve, we It was just, oh, it was brutal. It's just brutal.
I poured a lot of water on the farm. Or is that a drilled well?
The at thirty forty four?
Yes.
At the driven well.
Okay, so it's not even drilled. It's not very deep then, probably.
I, you know, you know, I honestly don't know, Dave. I I really, I really don't know.
Never, never had to find out.
No, well, it's one of those, yeah, it's one of those things that, you know, I realize the past doesn't dictate the future, but You know, thankfully, there is a lot of, there's a lot of of area, you know, to the to the south of the house. If we, if we do have to do something different there, but no, it's, I mean, it it it's terrific water. And there's just never, ever, ever been a been a well issue there. It's
Yeah, that's good.
Really interesting how much they, when the closeness of of there and 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 where where I grew up and because it's night and day as far as quality goes.
Well, Any more questions from the board? Anything else applicant wants to add? Do we have any, do we have any comments from the public?
Um, I don't see anything right now.
Okay. Should we, are we ready to close the public hearing? And again, the applicant or everybody is welcome and invited to stay on while we deliberate And hopefully make a decision, but if we've got all the information we need We can close the hearing. If somebody wants to make such a motion? Anybody?
Yeah, I moved that we closed the hearing.
Okay, Pat made the motion to close the hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll wait a second.
Dave Hale seconds. Any further discussion on closing the hearing? If not, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the hearing's closed. Mister Attorney, do we have to do anything else before we make a motion on this?
Well, it's the board's responsibility now to consider whether the request of the applicant Will Whether the request of the applicant will be Will not be I'm confusing myself. It's it's the applicant and the benefit to the applicant As opposed to the detriment to the community. Those are, that's the standard that this board has to weigh when considering the variance. So it's really, well, what's the benefit up to the applicant of going, of allowing this to be a two point oh six acre site Rather than a four acre site. And as the applicant is mentioning, his his, the benefit to him is that he would have more tillable land available I guess sell to somebody or to lease to somebody. And and what impact would that have on the neighborhood? The applicant has already indicated that several of the properties in that area and around the area are similar in size at at two acres. So, you know, we can go through the 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 standards that the state sets. We know whether the benefits up by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method. Well, the answer to that is, yeah, he can make it four acres instead of two acres.
Right.
So that's a feasible way to do it. Whether the variance will result in an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? No, because there are other properties that are similar of si- similar in size. Whether the variance is requested is substantial. It's, you know, substantial doesn't necessarily need a mathematical calculation. It's twice as, I mean, the the variance is requesting is A two acre variance or, you know, a hundred percent from what's required. But again, in the context of of building lots in and around that area And the fact that this is a two acre or a two family home, which kind of looks like a one family home. You know, it might not be considered substantial.
Yeah, I might consider it substantial, but that's just You know.
That's just one factor.
Yeah.
And then, you know, whether the variance will have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions. The answer to that is probably no.
Yeah.
And what whether the alleged difficulty was self-created and I think that that is an obvious yes.
Yes.
The applicant can can solve this problem by making it a four acre lot. If you wanted to.
Well, excuse me, but Tim, and I'll do respect, those those topics that you just went through Are actually charged to the board, not for you to to answer them and I
You are absolutely right and I'm 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 sending, I'm sending those questions out to you. To review them.
And your comments are should not be considered. I'm sorry.
That's what I was probably correct. So we need to, we do need to go through those and And get our thoughts on record on each one of those points.
I got a question before you make any voting. Is there other two dwelling houses out there along that era, area? Yeah.
Two family houses?
Two family houses, two dwellings, yeah.
I I don't know.
Or two family single. Does anybody know? Would this cause a conflict down the road?
I I I I wouldn't have any idea. I I would, I would have no clue. As many times I've been on Orndell Fire Road, I I really don't know. I mean, I I suppose, you know, if, you know, if if you wanted to Well, there again, define, I guess there's two, there there's actually one right next door at Ted and Patty Sterns'. And because there's, you know, that there there's, there's Ted, Ted, Ted and Patty live downstairs. And and I think it's, is it Brian and their other son Brian and and his wife live upstairs. And that's, but that that's been a, that's been a two family home for, oh gosh, probably Probably as long as thirty forty four has been.
Okay.
Yeah, and then and and, you know, that's kind of what's ironic in the hamlet of Delphi, there are multiple Multiple family dwellings and they are quite smart, you know, they are nowhere near a a four acre parcel Or even a two acre parcel or even a one acre parcel. You know, and
That's that's in a hamlet zone and that's
Yeah, so that's that's different than, but
Yeah. Well, let's consider these five points then as a board. And the first one is whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible. And and I think it can be, there's certainly the acreage there to, that's available that they could add to this parcel. That's my opinion.
I agree also.
Any other comments from the other?
Yeah, again, I I think he's not motivated by the dollar sales of the Parcel he's selling.
Right.
He is truly motivated by preserving farmland. I don't think the sale price minus two acres is is that big a deal to the Foleys. What they were trying to do is truly preserve farmland. You know, for for him to sell, I I forgot, John, maybe you can correct me, but around seventy eight acres.
Seven, they, the the entirety side is seventy three, so the for sale would probably be seventy one.
Yeah, so whether it's seventy one or sixty nine, the sale price isn't gonna change significantly
Correct.
To to go through this, all these gyrations. I think the motivation here is to preserve farmland. And that's key, you know, I and I'm speaking as a as a farmer and and know the preciousness of open farmland. And, you know, I think that's that's be commended, what he's trying to do. And 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 I think we we ought to go along with this.
So, but he still could achieve it feasibly By changing the acres to 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 four acres. If there's, if 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 money is not the object here There's, there's no other restrictions I can see other than just changing a lot line. There's no impediments, no benefit, no barriers and
No crack or ledge or something.
The stream or hillside, I mean, it could easily, the lot line changed to four acres. So, you know, we're we're stuck with deciding whether Sounds like, do, are we in favor of more farmland or are we in favor of complying with the ordinance? So to me, the the answer, and and we don't have to agree on this answer. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible, I I think it's very feasible to add a couple of acres and And comply with the ordinance. Obviously, Pat disagrees with that and that's okay.
Yep.
We don't have to all agree.
I'm still a little, I'm not convinced that that you can't still use that two acres. If you have four acres and kept that two acres that was tillable and just worked that out And made that, you know, what In the deed or whatever that says, you you lease the two acres to whoever's growing crops on it is And and just whether it's a gentleman's handshake or however you want to work that, I I don't think anybody's gonna put a field You know, a backyard of grass out in somebody's cornfield.
Right.
Well, we 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 don't, we don't have any plans of doing that. The, you know, but, you know, another, another, another owner of that, yeah, who knows? But no, that's not, we're, we're not, we're, we're not, we're not adding on, we're not putting garages down there, we're not It's a, it it it's a two, it it's a two family, it it it's two one bedroom apartment units and that we We we're gonna leave it that way as far as we're concerned.
Okay. Let's go on to the next question. Does it Is there an undesirable change in neighborhood character detriment to nearby properties? And that is considering four acres versus two acres. So, and I I don't see any particular undesirable change if if whether it's two acres or four acres myself.
Still gonna look the same back there.
It's gonna look the same. Any other comments on that one? Next one is whether the request is substantial and I think if you look at the Two acres versus four acres, it's, you know, it's twice as much and you were We would be allowing the Required four acres to be cut in half down to two acres. I think it's substantial.
Agreed, yeah.
Any other comments on that one?
It is substantial.
Okay.
I would agree.
Whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. That usually has to do with drainage or septic systems or wells. I I don't see any
I don't foresee it either.
Physical or environmental effects, whether it's two or four acres. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. It it is. So Not much we can say about that, but that's not That's not fatal to the application. So those are our our thoughts and comments on that. They need to be reflected in the in the minutes. And those are the things we should base our decision on. And The This the statement, well, let me read this statement. We 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 need to balance the benefit to the applicant With a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the community. So that's our tech, not technical charge. Dave, you were gonna say something?
Um, being it's on a county road, is there, the vote have to be? Um, being it's on a county road, is there, the vote have to be, uh, unanimous on this? No, we're missing it.
No, I don't think so.
We're missing. No, the county came back with their recommendation, which was that would have no countywide impact. If they came back differently, then you would have to over, you would have to override the county's recommendation by a majority plus one vote.
Right.
That's not the case here. It's a straight majority vote.
We, we referred it to them because it's on the county road.
Right, right.
We did get their comment and said we could decide on our, on our own.
I can't think of one in the past where we had to have a, a majority vote to, to get something to.
Yes. We, we have had that, not in this case. Um, so I think we've considered what we have to consider. Keep in mind the balancing test, but seeing the benefit to the applicant to the detriment to the, the community. So, I think we're ready for a motion if somebody wants to make a motion for against to, approve or deny.
I will make a motion that we approve, uh, this applicant, this application as, uh, stated.
Okay, uh, do we have a second to that motion? Yeah, hearing none, do we have a, a motion to, uh, deny the application? If not, then I'll make a motion that I'm, I'll make a motion that we deny the application. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, Dave Hale seconds that motion.
Uh, on, on the fact, I think you could still do the four acres and have it tilled. Have that two acres tilled.
Okay.
If that's the.
I agree with that and, and I think it's a feasible and, uh, means it's readily available to the applicant.
Yeah, I would agree with that. In, in that, in that, I don't think that two acres is, is lost tillable land.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, it could be allowed.
Yeah, it certainly can, can be and probably will be. I mean, who knows what the future holds? You're tying the hands of the, the owners of the small parcel to allow farming activity to go on regardless of what that farming activity happens. For example, if the new farm owner decides to spread manure right up to the property line or to the tillable line, that is, can be very offensive to some. And the first time that happens to somebody that is offended by it, it'll no longer occur. And they will push that line back to the original property and hence the land is lost forever.
What's stopping them from spreading manure on a smaller, closer to the house if we allow the lot to be what, what he's asking? It would be just as offensive.
It will be, but at least he's going to move it back, whatever the footage is. And he, you know, don't use manure, use something else. Maybe they don't, don't, don't like the, the use of organic fertilizer. I mean, that's what I should label manures, organic fertilizer or, or any other farming practice that, uh, the, the, uh, whoever the owner might be finds offensive. It's, it's taken, you know, land out of productivity, taken land out of the control of the farmer. And, and that is not a good situation. Remember, we all have to eat in this world and if we keep tying the hands of farmers, food is going to become more and more expensive for all of us. And that's exactly what we're doing with these kinds of regulations that are taking farmland away out of production. And I think it's ridiculous for the town of Pompey to promote the removal of farmland. And I know you guys have this idea that it can be held in farmland, but it will not, you, the farmer is losing control of the farmland. That is not a good situation ever.
Well, this may be something that the town board needs to consider, uh, but it's in the ordinance and maybe that it needs to be looked at and, and revised.
Yes, and in the meantime, we have this board to, uh, issue, uh, variances to the ordinance, which are reasonable.
And that's, so that's the request we have.
If that's a single family residence, is that a two acre, four acre parcel?
Two, two acre.
If that's a single family home, if somebody buys that house and converts it back into a single family home, is that a two acre parcel?
Yes.
Solid would be required.
Not four.
Right. So, we have a motion to deny, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to ask the secretary to, uh, we have to take a roll call vote, so she would call the roll and if you would say, I or nay?
Okay, Kevin Sharp.
And this is a vote to deny, correct?
Right.
Yes.
I'm going to side with Pat and go nay.
Okay, Patrick Frazee.
Nay.
Dave Hale?
Uh, I'm denying the app, what the.
You're voting yes to deny?
Yes, yes, yes to deny, yeah.
Okay, and David Tess here.
I vote yes to deny.
So it's a tie.
So the motion doesn't pass. Um, you.
Yeah.
So, at this point, the motion doesn't pass. There's not enough support for the motion to pass, so the variance hasn't been granted.
Right.
Now, the applicant has a timeframe by which he can come back to the zoning board and I have to look that up. I can't remember what it is, but he can come back to the, um, zoning board of appeals. Um, because we don't have a full complement of zoning board members tonight.
Right.
But there, I mean, he could, there would have to be a, I think it's a three-fifths vote by the board to bring this back.
Is that something that we have to take?
No.
Action on, like?
No.
Okay. So at this point, the application is denied for lack of a vote to approve.
Okay, now, um, am I, am I? Yeah, um, can we now make a second motion uh, to approve this and, uh, and have some discussion to further convince one, one of you to, uh, vote an affirmative?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
I'll give you this. Three acres. I could, I could, I could handle three acres for, for that lot.
Hmm. Can we act like a planning board and?
Well, the zoning board of, the zoning board of appeals has the right and probably the responsibility to grant the least amount of variance necessary to accomplish the goal of the applicant. So yes, you can do that.
I'm looking out for the other future two family dwellings that could have come in front of us after seeing this.
Yeah, good point.
I, I, I agree. I, I want to work with them, but like I said, I, I was a favorite of getting, having to do the four acre lot and having it tillable up to the two acres tillable, do something they could write in there. I've seen this done before. I've seen farms years ago, just tiller up to the back door of the house.
Yeah, the difference here, Dave, uh, or both Daves, is that this is already an existing lot. Nothing has to be done. Uh, and that's not, so this can stay this way forever. And that's a two family lot forever on one acre.
Right.
What they're trying to do is, well, let's make it a little bigger. Let's, let's get it closer to compliance. But still preserve as much farmland as we can. So, so this is, you know, and precedent is not supposed to play any role in any of our decisions. Nor should it this one. And each one has to be judged on its own merit. And this one is unique because it is an existing one point three acre parcel. That, that's the big difference here. So they're going to increase the lot size. They could do nothing. And it's a, it's a two family dwelling with one well and one septic system on one acre. We're going to improve that. We're going to make an improvement, an environmental improvement, an aesthetic improvement. But it's not, it's not a new facility. It's not a new, we're not establishing a new lot. We're not establishing a new building. A new, it, this is existing already. That's the big difference here. If they were before us and wanted to build a two family dwelling on a two acre parcel, I would be opposed to it, just like everybody else. But that's not what they're doing. They're trying to make this lot better. So I, I again would like to, uh, restate my motion to approve this as stated. And I think that the reasons is because this is a now a one acre lot. And this can go on forever as a one acre lot. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know the, is that one point three acres? I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Right. It can go on forever like that. And what you guys are trying to do is never going to improve that. What you guys want by denying that is never going to improve this lot, ever. Unless it's full compliance, which is ridiculous.
Well, Mr. Attorney, what do we do? What are our options?
Pat, are you making a motion to approve the variance again? The, are you making the same motion you made before?
I am.
Call for second.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to approve.
The variance as presented, which would be a two, a two point six, two point oh six acre variance.
All right.
Okay.
I'm going to change my vote only because the way it looks right now, it looks as a single family dwelling. And if nobody really knew any different, that, that's how it is. It's not, it, it isn't a big apartment place where you're going to have up to cars in there. You stated it's a one bedroom apartment. So the most you could have is, is a couple in there, but who each have a car. I've seen more cars with families with five kids circling around a house. I understand, I, I get what Pat is saying. You want to preserve the egg district as much as you can. But the fact that it has been there for, well, this guy's telling me his grandfather was.
It's been there a long time.
Been there.
Um, I grant, yeah, my, 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 my grand, my grandfather, uh, my, my grandparents bought thirty forty-four in, um, nineteen, nineteen, uh, forty-one.
Zoning was different back then.
Oh, yeah. Um, so we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, approve the application as presented. Any further comments? Then I'm going to ask, I'll ask the secretary to, uh, ask for a, a roll call vote again, please.
Okay, Kevin Sharp?
Yes.
Patrick Frazee?
Yes.
Dave Hale?
Yes.
David Tess here.
I still say no.
Okay, three to one.
The motion passes.
Application's approved.
Thank you very much.
Uh, you're welcome. Thanks for your, uh, patience with us and, uh, hope you understand, uh, well, you know what we go through because you've, you've been there.
Yes, I, yeah, many, many meetings.
Yeah.
So I, uh, it, it, so at this point, I, uh, do I check in tomorrow with Nikki or with Bob to find out what our next steps are?
Probably with Bob, because you got to go to the, he has to decide whether he's going to uh, sign it as a, um, lot line adjustment or send it back to the planning board for subdivision. So that's up to him.
It's going to be, it would be a lot line adjustment, but I need the maps to sign off on it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, 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 we'll communicate with you, uh, you know, uh, either via phone or via email then, uh, tomorrow on that, Bob. It, it's first what we have to do. Okay.
All right.
Just waiting you.
Yes.
Take care.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Frazee Farms LLC public hearing to consider a front yard variance of twenty-six feet from the required fifty feet to twenty-four feet situated at eighty-seven seventy, number four East Road. Do we have any other issues before we go into this?
Yeah, Dave, I want to comment on it first before we start.
Okay.
Uh, based on my research and I can be, uh, stand corrected, um, I'm not required to recuse myself unless there's some ordinance that town Pompey has, uh, has that I'm not aware of. In fact, it's recommended, uh, in some cases that I do not recuse myself because it, it's, is a, it is the same as a no vote. And with, with our town policy of not having alternates to replace me is another reason to not recuse myself from this vote. And, um, if, if, uh, I, I would like to reserve the right to vote on this, I guess. And, uh, I'm open for discussion on that.
Well, um, that you have to, I mean, it's clear that for the record, we need to state that, uh, you, Pat, you're the applicant here and, and you're a board, a member of the board. So, so there's a, a conflict there.
But not, but not a monetary conflict, which I think is the reason for the, the re- uh, request for recusal. There's no monetary value for me to, to, uh, receive based, uh, from the town of Pompey based on this. And, and again, I, it's quick research and, you know, I.
I, I, I'd be interested to know what your research is, Pat. Uh, there's attorney general opinions and there are controller opinions on this subject. I don't have them in front of me, but, um, they make it pretty clear that board members can't vote on their own applications. If you have a, if you, if you have a financial interest in, in the, uh, application before you, which you would, um, this would allow you to improve your business, then you don't, you can't vote on a, on an application that would, um, financially benefit you. So if you have, if you have research to the, to the adverse to that, I'd love, I'd love to know what it is.
Well, it's, it's, it's simply just Mr. Google, you know, like anybody else. So, so, uh, you know, I can't state anything. I, I'm not going to push this issue, so I, hopefully this will, will go through. So, um, I just wanted to state that. But if, if there's objection, uh, to the rest of the board, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Um, yeah, I don't think you should vote on it, uh, as to whether you should recuse yourself. Uh, that is up to you. Uh, we can't make you recuse. Uh, you're, you're here in present and I know you have an issue. You needed somebody to present it tonight.
There's, there's, I don't think there's any issue with, um, Pat presenting the, the variance request as, as, as the applicant.
Um, okay.
He can't participate in the discussion on whether the variant should be granted or not, but he can certainly request it.
Okay. Well, I'll go through, as I do with all other applications and read it into the record.
Dave wants.
Dave, one second. I got bad connection and I missed everything Tim said.
Oh, that's bad. He basically said it's okay for you to actually present and, but you should not be in on the deliberation of discussion giving us opinions on, on, on the application, or certainly not voting on it.
Okay.
But I said, I'll, I'll read this into the record, and then you can add anything you want to, and, and I'm sure the board will have some questions for you too. So we're, we're trying to keep this as, as open and as legal as we can to protect your application here too. So so we have an application from Frazee Farms at 8770 number two, number four, Road East. Fabius. This is in a farm zone. And subject of appeal, we would like to reduce the front setback from 36 feet, existing 36 feet to 24 feet. The strict application of law would produce an undue hardship due to increased local, state, and federal rules and regulations. We are in need of more office space and employee training space. The most efficient and practical means to accomplish this is to expand our existing office and employee space. Describe how the hardship created is unique and not shared by all properties in the immediate vicinity. It may not be unique to us. Other properties owners also have buildings with setbacks, setback areas, which would require variance if they wish to build within the setback area. Describe how a variance would observe the spirit of the zoning law would not change the character of the district. We have existing buildings already within the setback area, as do many of the surrounding properties. Signed by Pat Frazee and Will Frazee. We do have a copy of the application for the, the building permit. And which we don't need, but with this, it describes the project, a pole barn type of construction for addition to be built onto existing dairy barn. Addition will be 12 feet by 45 feet, maximum height of 15 feet, steel siding, no exterior lighting, metal roof with same pitch and height of existing barn. There's a sketch of the, of the building and which is very handy. It shows how it extends the roof line of the existing addition to the existing barn. In fact, it even says red steel siding. There's another sketch that shows the, the roadside. There's two utility poles there that are significant. It shows the new construction projecting 12 feet out from the existing office. And it's attached to, which is attached to the milkhouse and the parlor. Milking parlor, that is. There's another sketch showing number two road or four road, sorry. Number four road and another drawing of all the buildings on the property, showing this addition relative to those buildings. There's an aerial photo that again, it comes out kind of gray and dark, but the, the addition is shown on that as well. This did not have to get to referred to on a Dogger County because of its location and situation. So we're deciding on this all on our own. Any other questions by the, the board? Oh, has all the board gotten to see the property?
Yes.
I know I have. I was up there today, and there are two stakes in the ground to show exactly where it's going. So it's pretty easy to tell what, what's going on. Oh, I also checked with the Tom Purcell, the highway department, because it's closer to his road, and he didn't see any issues with it. He agreed that there are other properties along that road that are possibly closer to the, the road than this will be. So he didn't have any issue with it.
That was my question. Tom didn't have any issues?
No.
Road wasn't gonna change or anything?
Right.
Yeah, Tom is also a neighbor that required me to notify him as well of this action.
Okay, so, so he's well aware of it.
You're, you're not doing any driveways or anything. It's all flat or after roll right in there, isn't it?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. So. Any other questions? Do we need to, we need to take a short, we now, we need to make a environmental determination on this too, don't we? Just to state that it's type two action and no further environmental review is required.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Dave Hale, second to motion. So all those in favor of that environmental motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now we need to have a hearing. So we ready to open a public hearing? Can I just open the hearing? Do we need to vote on that? Tim?
You can vote to open the public hearing.
All right.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Dave Hale made a motion to open the hearing. Do we have a second?
Who, who did the second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is that Don Nuga Bower?
Yes, sorry, I'm really, really late.
Welcome. We just started the Frazee application, so.
Okay, thank you.
I read the application. If you didn't hear it, do you, do you have it in front of you?
I do. I have it right here.
And did you get to visit the site?
I did go by the site.
Okay. So we're, we're to the point of opening the hearing. So I guess I'll ask the applicant if he's got anything further to add.
No, not really. It's pretty straightforward. You know, we, we are in need of office space and training space. So long gone are the days where we did our training in the back of a pickup truck or and by cow or something. It requires a great deal of formal training. Most of it's online or, or computer based, and we just do not have space. As you look at the plot plan of our farm, it's, you know, there's several buildings you might ask, well, why not do it here? Well, where I'm sitting now, this is, this is the heart of our business. Our, our milking center is right here. All our office spaces right here. The internet is right here. This is where the heart of our operation is. None of the other buildings are heated. You know, it, it needs to be here. The, the regulations are getting more and more difficult, difficult to comply with. We're, we're actually chasing a market. We're one of far, one of five farms in the United States that, that have been approved for this specific market, the market our milk, and it requires a great deal of training of our employees and and meeting space for our employees. And, and we just don't have the space currently.
I, I got to walk through that. Your office there today, Pat, and you, you've got a pretty big operation in a very tiny office. You know, it's, it looks pretty crowded in there, and I, I would challenge any other company of your size to operate with administrative office that small, so.
Yeah, three of us share this, actually three and a half of us share this office. So and then we try to do training, employee training in here as well, so.
Yeah, so.
Catch, you might wanna catch Don up on the fact that Pat won't be able to vote.
I did catch that. I saw that.
You were there, okay.
All right, good. So, Don, you got any other questions at this point, or?
No, the, the only thing I had asked is if the town transportation had any issue with the building being a little closer to the road, and it, it certainly doesn't look like there's any issue to that.
No, we did talk about that. Tom Purcell has stated that he doesn't have any issues with it.
I, I assumed that, but that was the only other question that I had.
We did check on that with him, and he has looked at it. So, in fact, he's as the applicant said, Tom is one of the neighbors that got a notice about this meeting and hearing, so.
Oh.
He's well aware of the project. So I think we're ready to open the public hearing. So we need to do that. Did you make a motion to open the hearing?
I think I did, and then Dave seconded it.
Did we vote on it?
Um, we didn't, everybody, it just went from one thing to another. We didn't vote on it, but we did do it. Dave Hale motioned open, Kevin seconded, and everybody was in favor. Nobody, nobody said anything about not being in favor.
Don came in right at that point, yeah.
So.
I interrupted the vote.
We, we the motion's been approved. The hearing is open. Now, we've heard from the applicant. We've, is, is there anybody, anybody in the public that is asking any questions or wants to speak? Nobody?
There's one comment coming in on Facebook from James Loomis, number four, Road East. And his comment is, I'm, I am closest neighbor and I fully support the variance.
Okay, that's very good. He's right across the road.
More or less. He's down, down the street a little bit.
The house is down the street, but does he own all the property across?
No, we own that. That's ours.
Okay, but he's just owns the house there then?
Well, his farm is down the street from ours, and the property line is down this path, is near the farmhouse here.
Okay.
But we own directly across the road.
Okay. So that's good. Anybody else?
Nope, that's all the comments I see right now.
All right, good. Any, any other comments, questions while the hearing is open?
The two utility poles are quite significant there. One is, they're both have a transformer on them, and one is supplies underground cable to our second service back by the grain system that cannot be moved. So the, the town would have to look to alternative to, if they ever chose to expand the road. I mean, there's plenty of space on the other side. As far as snow removal, we remove all the snow in front of the farm with our equipment, so that, that's usually never an issue for snow removal.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, you're, you're staying right in line with the silo, the barn next to it.
Pretty much, yeah.
Yes, there's no slight distance problem or any of that, no.
No, then there should still be room for us to park our vehicles.
Yeah, yeah.
Right there where we do now.
Okay. I guess I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Okay. Kevin made a motion. Dave Hale made a, a second to the motion to close the hearing. Last chance, any other comments? If, if not, all those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, hearing is closed.
Dave, when this goes into the record, will this be when it says reduced from a 36 to 24? Because it's already 36, is it a 12 foot variance? What is the request?
It's a good question. We have to go from 50 feet.
From 50 to 24, so it's a 26 foot variance.
That sounds right.
Even though it's existing 36, okay.
I think we have to state it that way. If I recall, there was a variance on that other building many years ago.
Yeah, this, this, yes, this off, this current office space.
Yes, so.
That was actually my first appearance to the zoning board. I had to recuse myself from that one too.
Yeah.
Apparently you did okay.
Yeah, yeah.
2001, I believe.
So, again, we have the balancing test where we have to determine the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the community. And we need to consider these five questions or statements and enter them into the record. So whether the benefit can be achieved by other meetings feasible to the applicant. And I, I think we've heard from the applicant that this is the place to build and add on, and there's not too much else that's feasible at this point. Any other comments on that one?
No, I agree. I mean, he'd have to, to, to go brand new, to go away from the building, but since he's already got an office there to add on to it to keep it within the barn, so.
I'm assuming that, that parking additional vehicles, if you're talking about more staff at a, any given time, that you, if you had more vehicles or more people or whatever in the office that you've taken into consideration where those vehicles go, or if it's office space, there's always more parking.
Right, there is additional parking space where employees park. The parking space in front here is reserved for Pat and John.
Yeah, yeah.
Period.
Okay.
Even Will has to find a different place to park.
Okay. Next question, is there, is it? Yes, does this, does this change, make, is it an undesirable change in neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties? I, I don't think so. I don't see any change, detrimental change there at all.
Once it's done, I don't think anybody really knows it. It'd blend right in with what's there.
Agreed.
Okay. Is the request substantial? Well, you might say so, going from 50 feet down to 24, right? That's
From a variance standpoint, the number would be substantial, yes.
Yes, okay. Whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. You're gonna have a little more drainage off the roof, but it's, it's all paved around there, all gravel.
Other property anyway.
Yeah, yes. Whether, whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, yes, it's self-created, but that's, that, not detrimental to the approval. Okay, so given that I don't know, any, any other last comments? If, if none, would someone like to make a motion? To approve or deny?
I would move to approve the so stated variance from 50 to 20 from 50 to 24 feet, which is a 26 foot variance.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Dave Hale seconds the motion.
Does that give a tour with it too?
Oh, yeah, we get, we get a tour on the final inspection.
I'd love to see that operation.
Any other comments? We have a motion to approve. If nothing else, I'll ask Donna for a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Kevin Sharp?
Yes.
Yes.
Dave Hale?
Yes.
Dave Tess here?
Yes.
And Don Nuga Bower?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, you're welcome. Thank you.
If you guys noticed, when you were probably weren't looking at the farmhouse, but the, the chimney on the north end of the house is, uh, a chimney that Donna's dad, with his, with his brothers built, uh, years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
He also, he also put the blocks up in our, and I built our, our basement, so. We're, we're very sorry, very sorry.
That's nice. Yeah, that's all right. Okay, anything else tonight? Anything, gonna go to the order here, or, uh, if not, uh, uh, thank you very much, everybody, and, uh, uh, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Dave Hale makes a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
Don Nuga Bower's second. She got here just in time, Dan. Thanks for joining us.
How's the story, Don? Good?
Uh, that's, that's a long story right now.
Oh, okay.
Another night.
Another night, okay.
It looks good.
Looks good, looks great.
Yeah.
Other than the swimming pool on the front.
Oh, yeah, big hole, yeah. All right, uh, any other comments?
And I'll get word of them to permit. I just told her to go get the file.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So, thanks, everybody, and,
Have a good night.
I don't know about next time, but we should have a training session next meeting if we don't have any business. So, we're looking forward to that, looking forward to that with Tim. So, thank you.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
All right.